Well, then it's meaningless. So I suggested that since this pot of funds is generally being used for really big regional projects, it was not appropriate to condition these dollars this way. However, we got into quite an argument, and I will say it was an argument because it was quite heated. It was respectful, but it was heated at MTC, at our meeting a week ago. And we had this discussion, and it broke down almost evenly split in committee. It'll go back to the full commission next week. But the problem is, the big cities think this is no big deal because they don't have any problem meeting their targets. But all of the smaller jurisdictions and the counties where their projects are located, they have a big deal with it. So I expect that this will be discussed at length tomorrow at the Transportation Authority meeting, and I expect our county to be writing a rather strong letter. San Mateo County, Marin County, and Solano County have already submitted their letters. They are very strongly worded. It was, as I said, a heated discussion. I suspect that the county of Alameda will be split on this issue, as they seem to be at the meeting. So it's going to be an interesting one. But I wanted you to be aware, in case somebody mentions this, I did make a few rather pointed comments that are probably going to follow me for a while. So just in case somebody says something, this is a big deal issue, and we've got to stand our ground on it. And I did that most vigorously. So just so you're aware. Thank you.
Thank you. I just had a couple of things over the past couple of weeks. First, on Thursday, the 5th, started off the morning with the County Connection Operating and Scheduling Committee, which is a new committee for me on the board as your representative to the County Connection. Very interesting because they're grappling with making sure that all routes are properly staffed and functioning. And so it's very interesting. I'll have more to report on that in the future. Then later that day, I did also attend the mayor's conference in Lafayette, which, by the way, had a very interesting presentation from the East Bay Regional Parks General Manager. Basically, he was informing us of all the different aspects of what goes on within those regional parks and how they also have an impact on creating additional value throughout the region, which was surprising to me, but it was also very fascinating. On Thursday, the 12th, I chaired and participated in the 24th Annual Chief Special Agents Association Law Enforcement Appreciation Luncheon. And that's an annual event that that group puts on. And this year's event honored 14-plus officers and deputies from the two counties, Alameda, Contra Causa, and various police agencies throughout the region. And finally, we honored three members of the law enforcement community, one that had retired, and that was Kent Rainey of the BART system. He has now relocated to another position out of state. Steve Simkins also received a recognition award for his support when he was the chief of police at the town of Danville. And now he heads up the coroner's division for the county and is, by the way, a Clayton resident. And finally, we also honored our outgoing police chief, Chris Wenzel, for his service at various agencies throughout the region. That concludes my report and item number five. We'll move on now to item six, which is a public comment on non-agenda items. This is an opportunity for the general public to address the city council on any matter that is not on tonight's agenda. You will have three minutes to make your presentation, telling us who your name and what issue you're interested in. And seeing none.
We have no public.
Pardon me?
We have no public.
We do have some public out there, but...
They're here on unagenda.
Anyway, so there's no item. I'm going to close that item, item six. Public hearings, none. Moving on to item eight, our action items. And here we go with the presentation and approval of the city's audited comprehensive annual financial report for fiscal year ending July 30, 2017, by the Cropper Accountancy Corporation, an independent certified public accountancy firm, and our finance manager, Kevin Mizone, who will lead us before our esteemed accounting firms represent their position.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Diaz. So tonight, our independent auditors, John Cropper and Mr. John Cropper and Mr. Bryce Rojas, will be giving a presentation summarizing the results of their audit, as well as some financial highlights. But just to give a real quick snapshot, the city of Clayton did receive, is going to tonight, receive an unmodified opinion on its audited financial statements for the year ended June 30, 2017. So we actually issued, for the second year in a row, a CAFER, which is a comprehensive annual financial report, which is basically a basic set of financial statements, but kind of expanded in accordance with guidelines set up by the GFOA, which is the Government Finance Officers Association. So in a prior year, we implemented a CAFER for the first year, and we also took the drafting of the financial statements completely in-house. And after the independent, clean audit opinion was rendered on that CAFER, we did submit the report to the GFOA for the award. And we did have a few meetings back, we did present that award to the city council for acceptance. And that award, in accordance with the GFOA's guidelines, is included as part of the, within the introductory section of the current year's CAFER. So you can see that, I believe, on page... That is 14 of the introductory section. So that was a great achievement, and the goal is now to continue to prepare a CAFER for the auditors to then audit and submit that to the GFOA annually. And it is staff's intent to submit this report to the GFOA within the next coming weeks after tonight's presentation. So with that, I will hand the torch over to our independent auditor, Mr. John Cropper, and then also the pointing device here.
Okay, great. Perfect. Okay. I think I'll give that to Bryce so I can concentrate on other things and say, "On behalf of Cropper Accountancy Corporation, our CPA firm, we are happy to be here, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, to present your June 30, 2017 financial statements." And with that, I'd like to, before I forget, give staff a lot of credit. Independent auditors really don't want to prepare the financial statements. We can do it, but it makes us less independent. By Kevin and his staff taking on that responsibility, we've fallen into an area where I think you would be pleased to see we're putting our time into other areas that are more meaningful to the residents of the town and hopefully to the staff, as well as management. There are requirements for SEC firms, the PCAOB, the Public Company Accounting Oversight Board, has requirements that are filtering down but haven't quite reached city governments where they require that as an independent standard. So I thought I'd lead with that. Kevin mentioned it briefly. But we have a couple of slides that we kind of just want to do the overview. Kevin has mentioned this. We used to come up here and say, "Unqualified opinion." When you have an unqualified opinion, people would get confused. But now it's called unmodified, and hopefully that's a little bit easier to understand. On page one of this report, the council has hired the independent auditors to issue that opinion. And that opinion is the most important thing as far as we're concerned in the entire packet. So page one has our unmodified opinion. If you skip all the way to page 161, you'll see there's another report there, and it's more having to do with governmental accounting standards, which require us to make certain statements on internal controls. We're not issuing an opinion there on internal controls, per se, but you'll see that we know that the controls are functioning well in the city. The things that we did see are in line with what we would hope to see. We don't have any material weaknesses. We would have a letter for you if we found material weaknesses. The fact that you have no management letter from us, you have various letters, which I'll go to in a second, but you have no management letter from us this year. So the last thing up here is the tone at the top. We call that, as auditors, the environment that we audit in. It's strong, and it's gotten stronger. As you can see, the direction of your finance area in the city has really gone in the correct direction, and so we compliment you on that. We are hopeful that you have the actual financial statements, but it is very thick. We're just highlighting a couple of things. Page 19 is the statement of net position. That's the government-wide. There's a couple of balance sheets in here. One's a government-wide, and one's a fund balance. The government-wide has the full economic resources of the city, including any debt, any fixed assets and all that. So your assets are a little over $50 million liabilities, a little over $5 million. And assets minus liabilities is something called our net position. Some people would call it fund balance when you get to the second set of financial statements, and that's $46 million. I know your city manager is happy to see that there's an increase in the net position. It's not necessarily the job of government to add every year, but I think your city manager's goal is to add every year to the net position. And you added by over $1 million, $1,129. So you have a bigger number than you had before. And the key number that I, a lot of times, like to look at is highlighted there in green. We're trying to point out that that's real money, kind of the amount of money that you have to spend. Because this statement is done on a full accrual basis, I would say the fund balance one's more of a number that you have to really spend, because that's your current resources of the town, and that balance sheet number's on page 25. So I don't want to get too much into the weeds here. The net pension, this has been an issue with all the cities. You're seeing, all governments are having a hard time nailing this down. Actually, I would say it's more the valuation firms. It's gone up here about $820,000 to 4.4. And we have a slide coming up. I think that you may have questions on that. And of course, the capital assets decreased this year primarily due to depreciation, $383,000 to $30 million. Okay, so chime in if you... I'm here really for questions, so I do not want to go on and on as I kind of can do. But let me just say that this slide is kind of taking a shot at all the stuff that happened with Gatsby 68. And you can see the comparisons there. The deferred outflows is a new way of measuring an asset. There's a measurement date involved, and even though we're looking at June 30, 2017, the measurement date is June 30, 2016. And so anything you paid in this fiscal year is, and it's an asset for you, is shown in deferred outflows, and that went up. And the reason, that's a good thing, I guess, because in that number, and if you look in the footnotes, I think if you were at page 78, you'd see 600,000 of that number has to do with monies you've paid in on behalf of your employees for next fiscal year, and that'll be included in the next valuation. $900,000 and change is good news, I think, according to how your investments have done, or I should say, CalPERS investments have done. So they had a better year for next year, for the valuation. The pension liability, that's what we...
I'm sorry, you said lipstick on a pig?
Something like that. The pension liability, that's what we saw on the other slide, has gone up $820,000 on a liability basis. The inflows is another way of saying liability is well there, and that has gone down. And the pension expense is kind of the only thing there that you see up there that's not on the balance sheet. It's kind of the plug that goes to the profit and loss statement. There's a couple of things highlighted at the bottom of the page, and you'll see, over the next couple of years, starting in 2019, CalPERS is going to bring the discount rate from 7.5% down to 7%. And when the discount rate goes down, your liability goes up. And also, it's somewhat dependent on how well they do with their investments. So that's kind of the long and the short on that. We've been a little erratic. Kevin actually has a lot of detail on how it's done since '14. You know, I think we had one out of the last four years that was as good as the one that we're going to be experiencing. So you know, you can actually have a negative expense under this scenario. We thought you'd like to know all the letters that kind of start out. We have an engagement letter that we obviously try and determine what we should be doing, what staff should be doing, that we set out at the very beginning to set the standards for beginning the audit. At the end of the audit, I don't know if I want to call it a CYA letter, but there's a management letter that is signed by management that comes to us, usually the day we date our report. And that was September, I think, this year.
Number 22.
Which is very early. That means we were done with your audit in September this year. Usually when we come here, there's a huge crowd. So I think we're usually here maybe another two weeks or even a month later. But this is great, you know? I guess we're on TV, right? I'm sure they're all watching at home.
And we're streaming live.
Okay, I'll be on better behavior. And then there's also the communication letter. This is, the standards want us more and more to have communication with the council. And you'll get this letter every year. It's a required letter. This, we call it the SAS 114 letter. And in it, you'll see, it's pretty much a template, if we had disagreements with staff, but it does talk about notes, key notes, key sensitivity things, so far as the financial statements go. It, of course, does mention Gatsby 68. It does mention the post-employment. And last year, we implemented Gatsby 72, talks a little bit about that. But those are the ones that are the main things. And then I think one other thing that was disclosed in note 14 at the end has to do with a gain contingency that we see happening with the downtown lot eventually. So the audit process, if you are curious, these are, you know, we start the audit in May, June, July area. We come in and we do what we can to, you know, assess the risk that's here at the city by talking with staff, by sending questionnaires even to the council, consider fraud, consider our discussions with management. We pull various disbursements and receipts. We send out the confirmations. We actually probably tie down 90% of your revenues by confirmations with the county and the state. Look at new debt agreements. When we come back out at final, we're really validating the trial balance that we've been given, that's in final form, that Kevin gives it to us. And we go, and he's already pretty much audited. He's a former auditor, so he's kind of gone down through it. We validate the balance sheet. We do analytics. We, you know, make sure that we're getting everything that we need to on the P and L. Bryce is our senior that ran the audit, essentially. Did you want to add anything about fieldwork since you...
No, Kevin makes it easy on us and goes pretty smoothly.
That's true. And then we get to the report phase, and I don't care how easy the report is, 161 pages is 161 pages. It might even be longer than that. Yeah, so. We have a condensed form here. This is your city government-wide. You can see the general revenue, the program revenues, take out the expenses, the net position that we talked about of 1.1 that was being added to last year's $44 million, and so the ending is 46. And it's even better than last year, which, this is done on a full accrual basis. And what that means is, these are real numbers. If you really did do better this year. You know, we're accruing all the things that are liabilities, and we're accruing all the things that are receivables. This gets you an accurate representation of how the city actually did. And I know you've got a budget that you pay a lot of attention to, and that's usually done in the general fund. Even the general fund shows that there was a change of almost $300,000 to your fund balance going up. And if you look in the back end of the required supplementary information, you'll see how you did. You've got a budget there in the required supplementary information that talks about your surpluses and how you did with that. So I've gone on and on, and I could go on and on, but I'm going to go ahead and stop and say, "Congratulations on a great year," and are there any questions?
Thank you.
Yes?
So I'll ask one question. So Vice Mayor Hayden and I had an opportunity to meet with you about a month ago in the Budget Committee.
Yes.
So we had an opportunity to sort of quiz you on all kinds of things.
Sure.
In terms of how you do your audit and, you know, all the numbers and whatnot. So maybe the one question I ask, in a couple of the slides ago, you had mentioned that you're not producing a management letter, and that may sort of sound negative, but it is actually a positive thing. So can you elaborate on what that means?
Sure. We typically are, under our standards, required to issue a management letter if we see that there is a journal entry that we make as an auditor that is material to the financial statements. That would trigger a mandatory letter by our firm, under accounting standards. If we are looking at things at interim, talking with staff, recognize a risk, look at some of the controls, that could reveal what we would call a material weakness. It's a little, that could mean your financial statements are materially misstated, and we would want to report that. Then there's smaller things. It doesn't sound like a smaller thing when you talk about significant deficiencies, but several significant deficiencies can clearly add up to a material misstatement, and then deficiencies which can add up to a significant deficiency. So there's different layers that we have. In a small city, it's almost always that you struggle with segregation of duties. That would be the only thing that we could kind of say, but we chose not to elaborate on that. We've done it in years past, and I think that the council is aware of that. And it's constantly updating and doing whatever they can to mitigate. And there's a lot of little things that you can do to mitigate in today's world with the banking systems and the experience that is on your staff currently. So we feel like you're in good hands, and there's no need for that management letter that maybe you've had, and I think you've had every year. I think we gave one last year, too.
Yeah.
So first year. But we just kind of felt like things are going well.
Great. Julie, no questions? David?
Good job, everybody.
You know, you mentioned the fact that you changed the nomenclature, but I suspect that that's an industry standard from, to unmodified as opposed to...
Unqualified.
Unqualified.
Yeah, unqualified is like, what do we qualify, you know?
Right.
And everybody questions that. I don't, because it's normal to an auditor. Kevin doesn't, because it's normal to him. And I imagine your city managers heard it enough times that unqualified sounds normal, but about two years ago, they changed it to unmodified. If you have a modified opinion, an explanatory paragraph, something like that, out of the ordinary, we would certainly point that out to you.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then another, just clarification, and this is just for me to make sure I understand it. The total assets that the city has is this $50.02 million. That's on page three. That's everything. That's equipment, that's facilities, and so forth. Is that correct?
So page three, you're...
Yeah, that's the total number of assets, $50.02 million. That's the total of capital, equipment, vehicles, buildings, and what have you.
Yeah, it should be the same thing that you'd see on page 19.
Okay.
And...
I just asking for, you know, definition and clarification, too.
Yes.
Yeah, just to...
Yes, fixed assets are included. You can't really spend those. If you have a bridge in the town or the city, you can't sell it. So this is the full economic resources of the town that we put up there. It goes, the government-wide statement of net position on page 19, and the corresponding profit and loss, they call it statement of activities and changes in that position on page 20.
And then the final question, define for me what net position means.
Net position is essentially your equity.
Okay.
It's, you know, it's called net position on this statement. If you went to page 25, it would be called fund balance.
Fund balance.
And the fund balance, they categorize under the fund balance restricted, assigned, unassigned, committed. Committed is when the council does something by resolution, they reserve something. Unassigned, you know, that's where I kind of say it's your checkbook number, because there's a 5,400,000 number there that's, nobody really has plans for it. If you have a citizen of the town that says, "You're rich, you have all this money," I would qualify it with yes until next year, when there's new OPEB requirements and we don't know what's going to happen there. And, you know, you might have requirements in the town to handle a disaster that happens, you know, like Maraga had a big sinkhole, or those kinds of things could happen.
Recession, anything.
Recession.
Prepare.
Yeah. Although I will say, from just from what I understand, when people read your financial statements to look towards a bond or some debt, they do look at how much your expenses are, and you've got over one year's worth of expenses salted away, which is a very strong position.
Right.
I'm sure everybody...
And we appreciate that very much.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Well, I would just, to elaborate on that a little bit, it was, what, 10, 15 years ago when we had some massive rains, and we had a hillside take out part of Oakhurst Drive. I guess technically Marsh Creek Road. But about half of that four-lane road was badly damaged because of a landslide. It cost over $5 million at that time to fix it. It would cost far more than that now. But because of that, we knew that we had to have that kind of a reserve in case we hadn't been able to get any other funding. We were lucky that year that we got special legislation, because everybody had landslides, that allowed us to use that STIP money I was talking about a little bit earlier for repair of that. And all we had to have was the federal matching numbers of 11.5% to match that. But if we had had to shoulder that ourselves without any other funds, it would have wiped out our reserve.
Yeah.
And we certainly would have bonded for it, I'm sure, and paid it off over time. But nonetheless, you still need to have something in the bank. And a small city like us, it may be a year and a half worth of yearly fund balance, but in the scheme of fixing things, it's nothing.
Right. You've got to get out there tomorrow.
Absolutely nothing.
Yeah. And FEMA might come out and help, but it doesn't... And FEMA might come out and help, but it doesn't help with getting them going that day.
In percentages, it sounds like a lot of money. In real dollars, it's not much.
Well, the tone starts at the top with the council. It's been felt by your city manager, and it comes all the way down into the accounting area. So I'd just give you that feedback from an auditor's perspective.
Yep.
Great. Any other questions for John or staff? Okay, this is an item for public comment, and at this time, I would like to open it up to the public to make and address any comments they may have on this item. And seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment item and bring it back for your pleasure and action.
Unless there's any comments, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the comprehensive annual financial report of the City of Clayton for fiscal year ending June 30, 2017.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the report that we have received tonight from our public accountancy firm on the comprehensive annual financial report. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all will signify support by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, John.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks to Kevin.
Thanks.
And Kevin.
Kevin, can I shine your shoes or...
Great, thank you very much. I'm going to move now to item 8B, which is to consider the second reading and adoption of ordinance number 478, amending chapter 15.09 of the Clayton Municipal Code to adopt the 2016 California Fire Code and changes, additions, and deletions as allowed by state law. Mindy Gentry, our community development director.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. This ordinance was introduced at the last meeting on October 3 in order to implement the 2016 Fire Code with some local changes, deletions, and additions to address local conditions. No changes were made at the October 3 meeting, therefore, it's recommended the city council motion to have a second reading of ordinance number 478 by title and number only and waive further reading and by motion adopt ordinance number 478 in order to implement the 2016 Fire Code with local changes, additions, and deletions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, this is a, actually, I am going to open up to the public to address this item. Anyone wishing to address us on this item, please step forward. You have three minutes. State your name. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment and bring it back for action.
I would move to have the clerk read ordinance number 478 by title and number only and waive further reading. Second?
Moved and seconded to consider and read the ordinance 478 by title and number only. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance number 478, an ordinance amending chapter 15.09 of the Clayton Municipal Code and adopting by reference the 2016 California Fire Code with local changes, additions, and deletions.
I would move adoption of ordinance number 478 with the finding that its adoption will not have a significant adverse effect on the environment and is therefore exempt under CECL.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number 478, and with no significant implications to that. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all will signify support by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is ordered.
Good job, Mindy.
Thank you.
Short and sweet.
Okay, item C, 8C, or 9C, excuse me. That is for the, 8C, excuse me, we're just ahead here. Consideration of my request for the city to host seven Wednesday night concerts, excuse me, Wednesday night classic car shows with a DJ in the off-street city parking lot at 6099 Main Street, plus adding a portion of the city's vacant dirt property behind the church office and adjacent to the Kinder Care parking lot.
I would move approval.
Second.
Any, moved and seconded to approve the request of the...
Julie, Julie.
For the seven classic car shows. Any further discussion? Hearing none? Yes?
I just, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make certain that that approval included the waiver from the drivers or the cars on the vacant lot. That's on the agenda.
Okay.
And the reason is, Mr. Mayor, you know, this is the first time the vacant lot will be used, and I know in previous discussions with you, you indicated that, like last year, I asked, "Why didn't you use the vacant lot?" And you said that the classic car owners are a little unnerved about parking on dirt because cars can spin rocks. And so I think since the city is offering that or being asked to use that, we should get at least a waiver from those car owners.
Okay.
I heard that was part of Julie's thing, didn't I?
Sure.
I did. Yeah, I seconded that based on Julie's...
And by the way, just to clarify why we're doing that, that parking lot accommodates 20 vehicles, and there's always overflow, so that's what...
No problem with that, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to protect the city.
Okay, all will signify support as amended?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Okay, or any council items for future requests for meetings and so forth? None. No closed session? I'm going to adjourn the city council meeting to the next city council meeting on Tuesday, November 7. And now, we're going to open the Clayton Finance Authority meeting of October 17. And again, I'll note that all members are present with the exception of Member Hayden, who is away. And no closed session? Move approval? All consent items approved?
Second.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all will signify support by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's it. Okay, next, we have open for comments on non-agenda items. Seeing no rush to the microphone, I'm going to close the public comment section. And no action items? Any board items for future meetings? None. Adjourn until the next meeting as needed.